I'm going to go ahead and call the special meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners and the Monroe County Council to consider a letter of support for Beacon. I will state for the record that this is a support letter for inclusion in the 2022 Indiana Supportive Housing Institute project. The proposal would be funded if granted, the proposal would be funded partially by Monroe County using American Rescue Plan Act 2021 dollars. And our proposal is $500,000. So with that, I think we should probably just note, I should note for the record that present today are county commissioners, Lee Jones and Penny Githens along with myself. And we also have council members Kate Wiltz, Jeff McKim, Trent Deckard, and Marty Hawke present. We also have a number of support staff present. And I believe we should begin with our motions and then we can open the floor to Reverend Gilmore. And then we can have discussion and comments as needed. So we'll start with a motion from Commissioner Jones for the Board of Commissioners and then we'll move on to the council's motion.
Move to approve the commissioner's agreement to a letter of support for Beacon Inc., Beacon Inc., sorry.
Second.
Great. We have a motion in a second from the Board of Commissioners and Council.
I move that we approve the same letter of support submitted onto the floor by the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Great. Reverend Gilmore, tell us all about this, please.
Thank you. I particularly appreciate that you all made time for a special meeting here. So thank you for doing that. That's really going above and beyond. And I definitely believe on behalf of many of our homeless neighbors that this is worth it. So thank you for your time and doing this. This is, there's a lot to say. And so some of it, I'll just invite questions, but I wanted to give a basic overview of what's going on, which is in essence, we have something called the permanent support, something called the Supportive Housing Institute, which is a longstanding practice through, for Indiana to allocate affordable housing tax credits and other financial support for permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing in particular is directed and targeted at our most vulnerable homeless neighbors listed as chronically homeless. And they're the folks who generally, their average life expectancy is 47, 48 years old and generally die on the streets without intervention. They often have what we call trinormity, which is a combination of severe mental illness, severe substance use disorder, and chronic illness or physical disability and/or physical disability. They often have all three. And so their, their life expectancy is very short because of that and, and have very, lots of struggles being able to get off and out of homelessness without serious assistance. So this year's institute was, we've been preparing for a while for this institute, knowing it was coming up in early, in early October. The RFP was released and we began to review it. And it was a very unique RFP this year, request for proposal, in that they're dedicating, the state is dedicating housing trust funds, which has been traditional, but also dedicating ARP, American, the American relief plan funding to it and not doing tax credits like they traditionally have done. And so it's a very unique opportunity. It's, if you get in the institute, it's a non-competitive process for that funding. So once you're entered in, you're assured a certain level of funding, assuming you follow through with all the project requirements. And it's $5 million, which is a substantial amount of money to come to our community to target housing and in particular to target housing for our most vulnerable impoverished neighbors. As part of this application, which we've had to do, there's a number of things that we've had to do to get to this point. Among those is develop a partnership with a developer. And we've done that with a company called Gratis Development, who I'm very happy and excited to be working with. And also with a property manager. And we've built a relationship with Valenti Real Estate Services. And so all three have agreed to us and the others have all agreed to be part of the institute, should we have a successful application. That application is due November 22nd, next Monday. So there is, we've, we met all the requirements. We, I think we'll have a very compelling and strong application. But there is one aspect of the application that it has been, is requires your assistance, which it's asking for local financial commitment to the project. And so they are willing to dedicate the significant amount of funding on the state level to support this, these types of affordable housing projects. But they want community buy-in and they want community buy-in from, financial buy-in. And in particular, they want buy-in from local distributed ARP dollars. And so, so that brings me to, to this moment where we've, I've had conversations with Penny and a number of others about just this whole, the whole nature of this, this project. And that's how we ended up getting, getting here and to this, this moment, which again, I thank you for. And I do want to let you know that the city did decide to commit to the project. And so when we made that commitment, we just learned about that, I think on Tuesday, so yesterday. So, so one of the beauties of that is that that brings in that if you were to choose this, that that would bring in a city and a county commitment to the project, which I think would make it all that more compelling and make us a very competitive applicant for the, for the institute. We participated in two institutes before and they brought us the Crawford one apartment and Crawford two apartments to our community, which I can talk about a lot of those, a lot of that. But one of the things we know is that those have had some tremendous positive outcomes for the, the people who've ended up living there. Obviously people with incredibly high needs and high demands and high challenges. But we've seen a lot of positive outcomes out of that work. And so we want to continue to support these folks again, who are at such risk. I think that's probably a good overview. There may be some things I missed that you might want to ask or talk about. I also did want to say that Ephraim Pfefferman is, is here. And if you'd like to invite her to speak at some point, she, along with Tina Peterson, chaired the Heading Home Plan process. And she's here to speak to the, the, how this program enhances the Heading Home Plan, that is part of that plan and, and a natural support for it to move forward. And I think Jean Kapler might be on to, which is our board president. And so if you'd like to hear from her as well, she's, she's here also.
Awesome. Let's go ahead and hear from Ms. Pfefferman first, and then we'll hear from Ms. Kapler if she can get promoted. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Excellent. First, I, I wanted to thank you for not only the opportunity to join you this evening, but for your recent commitment to the Heading Home Project, as we shared out publicly last week. To each of you, just a debt of gratitude for your support of this initiative that I, I think we all feel will be transformative and much needed for our community. So our deep gratitude from not only Highway and the Community Foundation, but all of the partners and all of the people who will ultimately be served by that project. And so in, in talking about how the Beacon proposal aligns with the Heading Home Plan, Tina and I did have the opportunity to sit down with the team from Beacon and talk through that. And, you know, I think both felt that it certainly aligned with the overall objectives in there. Cause the plan, while the plan is focused on housing people and that takes a range of, you know, of options and the project described, you know, has a component of housing that fits within that continuum that's needed, especially for our most vulnerable, as well as providing increased access to services, wraparound services that a population truly needs. And so we felt that, you know, it was in good alignment that, and as the United Way Director, you know, Beacon's been a long time partner, always passed our certification process with flying colors and been a collaborative partner. And I think, you know, the county can probably say the same. We all work together really well. I just wanted to express my personal support for them pursuing this opportunity to bring some dollars in, to help do some things in the community. And yeah, encourage you to, to consider the same. So thanks for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Kapler, did you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you. I'll be really brief. First, I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you for being open to considering this. I am really excited about the prospect of adding to our affordable housing stock, to the number of units available for supportive housing, permanent supportive housing, which is very much a housing-first approach. And as evidence-based, the literature supports this as a best practice. And so I, I'm excited to bring more of that to our community and appreciate your consideration and supporting this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll turn to the Board of Commissioners first for comments or questions, and then we'll turn it over to the council to lead comments and questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, this is a wonderful opportunity and I'm certainly very supportive of it. It's a massive community problem. And while this may not completely solve it, it will probably go a long ways towards helping out with it. I am just a little bit curious about the developer and I think you called them a property manager who's involved with this. Can you tell us a little bit more about them? Are they from Monroe County? Have they done other projects here, that kind of thing?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So gratis is a, is a new relationship for us. We've typically, and in the past worked with Milestone Ventures, which is an Indianapolis-based company. But this institute only allows developers to work with one project. And they, from past years, had, had an alignment with another project this, this time. So they weren't able to work with us and they recommended gratis, G-R-A-T-U-S, Jonathan Elkie, to us. And Jonathan has a history of, he's worked for IACDA, he's worked for other developers, and he recently opened his own, his own company, which is called Gratis in 2019, and has been doing this development work. He's been through, I think, four institutes prior to this one and, and has a lot of experience in that way. And honestly, in my work with him, I've been really, really impressed. He's prompt, thorough, thoughtful, compassionate. And, and I feel really lucky that he had an opening and an opportunity for us to work with, with him. That's not very common to be able to, to find someone, particularly with those kinds of skills that's, that's available for this kind of work. He's in, he's also Indianapolis-based. So, so he's not based out of, out of our city, but, but, but in the state at least. And the property development company is, or property management company, sorry, is called Valenti. And we worked Valenti, with Valenti before. We went through one property, one institute with them and, and worked with them and worked with them with Crawford for, for a time. They're not with Crawford currently, but we worked with them, with Crawford for a time. And by far our best and most positive property management relationship was with, with them, which is one of the reasons we sought them out. And we are currently working with them through Southern Knoll, which is the property on 11th, sorry, Third Street across from the cemetery. Project's been around for about a year or so. That's been, and we were currently working with them. We have some, a number of apartments, I think somewhere around 10 apartments in that, that unit, in that complex, out of 30 something, 31, 32 are folks that came, came from our, our work. So, so we really like Valenti, have a good, strong, solid working relationship. They're also Indianapolis-based, but they've done a lot of local work here. And they're, and they're, the people that they hire are local. They're, they're Marcy Chapman, who's their primary local regional manager is, is local and, and will probably be the on, on the ground lead for what comes forward.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Yeah, good team. Again, I feel very lucky. We've come, got a, brought a lot of really good people together to make this work. So I feel pretty excited about that.
Commissioner Githens, answer questions?
Well, when I first talked with Reverend Gilmore about this, I said, this is Crawford House on steroids. And I think it's, partly because it's not just living space and services. You're also planning things that would provide things like an emergency winter shelter, low barrier shelter onsite, and possibly even some job training, which
Absolutely.
again, leads to stability for people. So I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about this and I hope that you're able to get the grant.
Penny?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, yeah, that, that our grand vision, which will require zoning and all kinds of complications and site selection to make sure it's all possible. But our grand vision is actually to combine Shalom Friends Place and the apartments all in one building, so that we would have Shalom say on the first floor, Friends Place our overnight shelter on the second floor, and then property management apartments above. So it almost creates like a stepping stone for people to kind of move from that first encounter with homelessness all the way through to housing. And that would also allow us to co-lead Kate's services onsite. So right now we're in conversation with Health Net, formerly Volteers in Medicine, to have a clinic onsite. And we're in conversation with Indiana Center for Recovery about possibly having them do recovery work onsite. And, and we're looking at other, other options as well. To bring in as many, you know, as, to have as many partners as possible doing, doing onsite work. Certainly will be in conversation with Community Health, how you commit to Community Health and, and with Centerstone and, and others to kind of wrap around services as much as possible.
Excellent. And I just want to say that I, I, I see that all of this is a very exciting proposal and it is tailored for our community and our county's needs. And all the work that's been done so far has been so effective, but you just need space to do it. And this would be an answer to that. And I think it dovetails nicely with our Criminal Justice Reform Study in terms of reducing the load on criminal justice and, and system, and also reducing recidivism as well. So I think this is just a huge benefit for all parts of our community and really excited about it. So I'll turn it over to council member Wiltz to manage her crew.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Sure, it looks like, Jeff, would you go ahead?
Thank you very much. I first of all, want to make it clear that I am absolutely strongly in support of this proposal. I, I'm glad that Ephraim came and joined us and tied this into the Heading Home Program. You know, if we look at the Heading Home Plan and look at the number one strategy on the, on the report, increase housing stock for low-income households and people in extreme poverty, 30% or lower AMI. We need, I mean, we, we have committed to that kind of plan. We need to take the actions that we can to be able to actually fulfill that plan. And in particular, when it means bringing in a substantial amount of, of this home ARP funding from the outside to be able to achieve it. So for us, you know, I, you and I had talked about this project a couple of times. And, you know, one of the, one of the things we did discuss, and I was wondering if you could maybe elaborate on it a little bit, is to maybe talk about how some of the lessons, you know, some, some of the lessons you've learned from the challenges at Crawford Homes can be, can be mitigated or addressed in a, in a project like this.
Yeah, that's one of the things, and I would even say that at Shalom Center as well, is one of the things I think we really intend to do is to, is, is to look at design right from the beginning and, and really think about strategic ways to use design to mitigate concerns, improve, you know, outcomes, prevent things like property damage, and also kind of, you know, positively impact the neighbors. Because that's of course, always something that, that's of concern is, is how does this impact the neighbors? And so we've learned a number of things from that. And so over the years, lots of little details, like even, one of the things we learned is you can put this little kind of, you know, these are just little things, but you can put this little kind of motion detector on a stove. And if people turn on their stove and then walk away from the stove, the motion detector will turn the stove off. You know, so there's just all these little things we've learned over the years, how to shape an entryway so that it creates access, but also allows you to regulate who comes in and who doesn't. One of the big, I think, gifts of this property is because of the least desire, and again, zoning and site selection will have a big impact on this. But for able to create this vision of having all three buildings, all three programs together. And that was inspired by a program I saw in St. Paul, Minnesota, several, almost 10 years ago. That really inspired me. And they did it like that. And I thought it was just an innovative idea. But they, by doing that, we, one of the, probably the biggest challenge we've had at Crawford is it's been a struggle to regulate people who aren't tenants. And, and that's, that's been incredibly profound challenge. And, and one of the things, the advantages of this model is that we would build the entrances in a way that, that someone always had to pass a person before they could access the services in the building. And, and by, and in that way dramatically reduce the potential impact to the neighborhood, but also to the property itself, which has been a pretty significant problem with Crawford. Because we would have the, we would have the day shelters and the overnight shelter kind of monitoring the, the opening floors all the time. So that's, that's probably one of the bigger advantages, I think, to this. We'd also, again, we want to think about fencing and parking and all these things that down the road, but thinking about them from a strategic way, how do we, how we build them a way to kind of keep ourselves a little more shielded from the neighborhood and, and creating support, kind of safety and privacy, so that the neighbors feel, have a positive experience.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from council? Trent?
I appreciate very much Reverend Gilmore's comments and also Ephraim Pfefferman, pardon me. Ephraim Pfefferman, Ephraim Pfefferman, pardon me. Being here, this is what happens at the end of a teaching day, my friends. But, and certainly Reverend Gilmore, I appreciate the, the questions that you, you've answered back to me. One thing that I, a comment I want to make, and I think Councilor McKim spoke very well to all this, is one thing that this community does well is bring resources into this community to benefit this community, which is a regional center for, for figuring all these things out. And I, I, I would be very sorrowful about any money that doesn't come to this community that we might not be able to take part in to help us with our problems. And we have problems and we're very good about finding dollars to come support those issues, those problems. And there's so much, there's a lot of detail, I think, that has to be determined and worked out. But I, I, I believe that that's just about with any problem and any issue that you have. And I don't know very many anythings with, that have $5 million on a table for grant support. It's just unheard of. And wearing my old fundraiser hat, it's unheard of. Wearing a government grant hat, it's unheard of. But we are in weird, unique times. And I like to take every opportunity we can to benefit this community. And so I'm very intrigued by that. I look forward to other people's questions and comments here. But these opportunities have always benefited this community to help our, our people. And that's a good thing, among a bad thing, or a difficult thing.
Thank you. Council McKim?
Since, since we're talking about the, the money and I believe the allocation, the home ARP allocation, non-competitive part is $5 million. How many units of permanent supportive housing will that be approximately?
Yeah, it, it, we're targeting between 20 to 30. And so, you know, construction will obviously have a factor in that. And what we're planning to do is do the whole thing as part of a capital campaign. So the housing would be part of that. And this is a big part of funding that, that side of things. But I think what we're, we're aiming for is somewhere in the 20 to 30 range in terms of units. And, and some of that obviously will depend on what funding comes in. And, but the $5 million itself would probably be in the 20 range, low twenties. So to get it up to say 25, we, you know, need to bring in a little bit more.
And the ISHI funding is only available for housing, not for shelter? Is that, that correct?
Yes, yeah. This is specifically, this institute is specifically and only for building permanent supportive housing. And we can't use that $5 million for anything but housing.
So we'd have to find other, other sources of funding for the, the add-ons, the other pieces?
Exactly. Like so the Shalom Center and Friends Place side of things, you know, will eventually, assuming, again, we find the site that's appropriate, we'll go through a capital campaign to, to, to raise that funding.
Thank you.
And we estimate the overall, I mean, again, it's real early, but we estimate the overall project would probably cost somewhere in the range of $10 million to $12 million. And so we're approaching half of that with, with just this, this project and this institute. And so that's, that's the, that's the good news of this, is that it gets us a long way really fast.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge for the record that Councilor Iverson has joined us. And also ask if there are any other questions. Oh, Commissioner Hawke?
I attended this meeting simply to learn more, get information and take it back to the public. I think a project of this magnitude takes a great deal of public discussion. Not something that can happen so quickly. So I'm very concerned as to why we have to be in such a rush to make these kinds of huge decisions with public dollars without enough conversation with the public. I guess that's by question of you, Mr. Elmore.
Yeah, sure. So, so the, so 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 the, so this is a requirement to get into the institute that we have local commitment to it. So, you know, and and so that's that's the side of this, the act of the process is one in which we, the institute itself is a training process where we go through several months worth of training, 11 days total throughout four or five months, I believe, and and develop the project from there. But without local commitment, we wouldn't even get in. And so I believe there's established precedent for this kind of program. It's certainly as as our president, Gene Kapler, expressed its its best practices for this population. And and so that's and and it's an opportunity that honestly, if we don't take it, it will go to some other community. And so
I'm not sure I get the answer to the question. Let me ask the question better. How long have you known that you needed the support? I I that's why I'm just trying to figure out what is the, what is this rush here that we haven't had?
Oh, good question.
Right.
I I hear you. Got it. Yes. Yeah, so the RFP came out in in early October. And 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 so the rush, to some degree, was defined by that particular process and also learning the process by which to get approval for this. And and also to be fully, in in full disclosure, a delay by the cities in answering whether they would be a sponsor. And we initially approached the city and and experienced a delay in that that made me start to worry about whether they would choose to make that commitment or not. And that's when I learned that the county could also be part of that commitment. And that's when I approached Commissioner Githens about it, and we went from there.
Okay, so and I, so we're being pushed to make a decision because the city wouldn't make a decision well. And we're talking big bucks, folks. We've got a lot of plans, a lot of written down plans of what we want to do with these public dollars that we got these ARPA dollars. And so sometimes you have to look at, is it just going to go to first come, first served to to get a portion of those dollars? Or but at any rate, as I said, I am here to listen, to learn. I'm certainly not going to vote on something like this when I, you know, have no information to take to the public. I haven't heard public discussion on it. Big thing will be where it's going to be located. I know that Crawford House has really not been what people would call good neighbors in their location. We've had people all around that have shared their concerns, not just with me, but with the public and with law enforcement about, you know, one personal friend of mine is just like, I don't know whether he closed his business, but he was thinking about moving his business. So it would be a great deal about where this would be located so the community would feel like they could do a buy-in with this. So if we had a lot of time where we could take it to the public and they could discuss it, but we don't. So sad that the city didn't either get on board or not when they were offered the opportunity.
And they did, in fact, jump in, but we found out just yesterday.
Oh, I mean, when you said that you went to the city before and had a delay in getting an answer.
Right, yes.
That's what I was responding to.
Yeah, same. Yeah.
Councilor McKim?
I I just wanted to say that I know that this, you know, the process is maybe a little bit different than sometimes we're used to. We like to have all the details buttoned down and be more like bank officers approving the the loan that's already been all completely vetted and fleshed out. That's simply not the way this process works. And I personally, I'm after having spent a fair amount of time going through all the materials for the ISHI, talked to program managers there over the last couple of days, you know, written emails, gotten good substantive responses. I'm really, I'm very enthusiastic about the process. I think this is, this is exactly the way it's supposed to be. It's kind of, it's a collaborative approach where many subject matter experts and and stakeholders in the community are kind of moving forward together, learning about best practices together, selecting a site together, bringing in funding from the outside. So I know it is different than, you know, we have all the details, we know exactly where it's going to be, and we're voting yes or no. But that's why this grant is also contingent. I mean, it is contingent upon having a successful project, having a project that is that that meets all the criteria and going successfully through the institute. So I, you know, I certainly understand Councilor Hawke's concerns, and it is different from the way we often do business. But that doesn't mean it's wrong.
Councilor Iverson?
Yeah, thank you. And I also wanted to point out that taking Crawford Homes into account and trying to use it as a comparison, I think, has some really good examples in terms of the numbers that Beacon can show that it reduces incarceration rates as well as hospitalizations. And I think both of those are great indices that if we can duplicate those numbers with a program like this, then that has wide range effects on our community that I think are very positive.
Great. Thanks. I'm, if it's okay, Commissioner Githens, I'm going to say one thing and then turn it back over to the commissioners to to run the meeting. I'm supportive of this project and really excited about the possibility of using ARPA funds in the way that I understood them to be intended, which is to build something that can be an investment in our community for the future and that can be built upon and leveraged for further funding and good work. So I'm excited and I'm very much in favor. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you so much. Great conversation and great information. And I will, I will add that I appreciate what Councilor Hawke is saying. But we also do have some funding allocated in the ARPA plan that we have adopted so far, which includes funding our Heading Home, the Heading Home Plan, and also dealing with the criminal justice reform that that we so desperately need in our community. So I think this fulfills both, and that's why I'm supporting it. Let's go ahead and quickly see if there's any comment from any member of the public. If you could limit your comment to three minutes, we would appreciate it. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, I do not see any, so we'll come back. And if if everyone's okay with that, call for a vote on the support letter and ask Ms. Miller if she would be so kind as to call the roll for us. We'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And could we call the vote for the council as well, please?
Absolutely.
May I ask a question of our legal representative, please?
Of course, please.
I came to this meeting to gather information to take to the public. Was it, do we know there was going to be a vote on this? Rather than just listening to the information? I mean, I really appreciate the fact that Councilmember McKim had opportunity to do some investigation. So he supports it, and that's really great. Doesn't mean we've taken it to the community. And I think it's very unusual that we vote on something without taking it to the community and take, so the public will understand what we're voting on. I can't vote in support of this, and I certainly regret that I would have to vote against rather than just taking the information.
I think that it was anticipated that there would be a vote on the letter to support. So I saw the agenda that was typed up, and it was about supporting or agreeing to support this letter. So I thought there was was going to be a vote. Certainly, it's a
That's fine, I'll vote. I'm I'm fine. I mean, I know how to say yes, and I know how to say no, and I do both pretty well.
It looks like we have a couple of hands raised. So Councilor McKim?
I just wanted to respond on the on the voting issue is that, you know, we, this is a vote. So this initially came because the commissioners discussed this in one of their public meetings. And at that time, they agreed to, I guess, continue that item so that their vote on the the letter of support so that they could include discussion, include the council. So that's, you know, that this is a, this flows directly from that meeting. But also, I want to remember, remind everybody that there will be undoubtedly lots of other votes on this project. First of all, there will have to be an appropriation. This is simply a contingent letter, a letter of commitment to this project. But there are certainly a lot of contingencies that still need to be met. We still need to, you know, to to do an appropriation if if it gets that far. And, you know, of course, the 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 award would have to be made through ISHI. The the project would, they'd have to find a successful location that meets all the the zoning codes. So there's, there are a ton of contingencies and undoubtedly many other votes that'll be taken on this project before the end of the day.
Councilor Iverson?
Okay, well, somebody call the vote, and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I'm going to let Councilor Iverson make us
Point of order, Councilor Iverson has his hand up. I think he can comment too. Others have taken opportunities to comment.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor Iverson.
Councilor Wiltz, may I ask for the motion to be restated, please?
Absolutely. Councilor McKim, since you made the motion, can you do that or should we have it read from somewhere?
So the 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 commissioners introduced their letter of support, and I I made a motion to approve the same letter of support that the commissioners did and introduced.
Thank you, Councilor McKim.
I believe we are ready to vote now.
All right, Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed four to one.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, I believe that concludes our business.
I believe it does, and I appreciate everyone. Thank you all for joining us and thank you all for this wonderful project and bringing it to us. We are glad to sign this letter of support, and we will get this, I know Ms. Purdy is on. She will get this signed and to you as quickly as possible so you can meet your deadline. Okay? Great. And with that, thank you all for joining us for this special meeting, and we are adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.